Let's go to the next briefing. This is, um, hang on eviction.
This is a council discussion item, Mayor. So maybe, I think it was Councilmember Kassar's office who requested this, so I'll ask her.
Councilor Kassar, you want to set this up?
No, I would go ahead and let, um, the staff from Legal Aid and Basta talk us through what we should be watching out.
Sounds good. So do we have, uh, Shoshana and Marissa here? If you're talking, you need to unmute.
One second, Mayor, we're getting them over here.
In this short little break we have, Councilmember Renteria went to great lengths this morning, not to be present with us as we were beginning the meeting, because he knew that he had celebrated his 70th birthday on Sunday and wanted to avoid us singing "Happy Birthday" to him, which we don't do now that we're on individual screens like this. But Councilmember Renteria, happy, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we are here on that note, happy birthday, late of birthday. My name is Shoshana Krieger, I'm with Basta and I'm here with Marissa Latte, who's with Texas Ria Grande Legal Aid. Of course, Basta is also a project of Texas Ria Grande Legal Aid, so I have both of those hats on. And we're really happy to be with you here today to just talk a little bit about what's going on with evictions in Travis County. Most of our focus is going to be Travis County because that's where we have the most data and information. We will hit a little bit on some things which we know happening in Williamson. So if we go to the next slide. So just a quick overview of today's presentation, we're going to do a quick overview of the eviction process, talk briefly about changes to that process with COVID-19, which y'all are pretty familiar probably with a number of these changes, but there are many of them, so just that we're all on the same page. And then we're going to go through some data just of the current state of evictions. Today is the first day that evictions are just kind of regular, normal, non-payment cases are being heard in Travis County. And there are a few hundred which are set to be heard in the next two and a half weeks. And that's probably going to start a much larger wave of evictions that we'll see over the next few months. And so this is a moment in time when we might be able to intervene to try to minimize the number of evictions. Next slide.
So I'm going to go through just a basic overview real quick about the normal eviction process. And this is, this is what evictions look like pre-COVID. So just to walk you all through what that typically looks like, that has changed a bit now that we're under a number of different orders and laws that have passed recently. Next slide, please. And one thing that's important to point out here is the difference between formal and informal evictions. A formal eviction is when a tenant moves out after there's court involvement, a court filing, it may or may not end up in a judgment ultimately in the court. An informal eviction is when a tenant moves out after a verbal or written threat of eviction, but there's no actual court involvement. So sometimes there's a notice to vacate issued and the tenant leaves after that. Sometimes there's not even a formal notice to vacate, but it's just the landlord saying, "You need to leave." And as you can imagine, we don't have data on informal evictions, but we know that the court data we have that we're going to talk about in just a little bit is incomplete because it does not capture all of those informal evictions that we know happen all the time. Next slide, please. So the typical formal eviction process, this is if you don't pay rent, but it's very similar if you commit any other type of breach of the lease, is that the landlord has to give a tenant a written notice to vacate. The Texas Property Code says that this has to be for three days, but the lease can shorten or lengthen that. Sometimes subsidized housing require a longer period. The Texas Apartment Association lease, for example, shortens that period to just 24 hours. So the landlord has to give a notice to vacate in compliance with whatever the lease has shortened or lengthened that period of time to. If it doesn't say anything, it's three days. If the tenant is still in the unit after the expiration of that notice to vacate period, then the landlord files a forcible eviction and detainer lawsuit in the Justice of the Peace Court in the precinct in which the premises in question are located. That gets set for a hearing during normal times when rules aren't suspended. That hearing has to be no sooner than 10 days after the case is filed and no later than 21 days after the case is filed. There's, at least for a while, that rule has been suspended to give courts some additional flexibility in when they schedule those hearings. But normally, it's between 10 and 21 days. The constables will then go out and serve a citation on the tenant, either personally or by posting on the door of the tenant's unit. And then the hearing will occur and the tenant is notified of that hearing by receiving the citation. The hearing is held in the JP Court, typically all of that was held in person. The vast majority of the time, particularly in non-payment cases, the tenant is found to owe rent. And if they, and they will lose if they're found to owe rent and don't have a defense. And then the tenant has five days from the date of the judgment against them to file an appeal to the county court. And if the tenant doesn't exercise that option to appeal on the sixth day after the date of the judgment, the landlord can obtain what's called a writ of possession, which then authorizes the constable to go back out to the unit, post a 24-hour warning notice, and then come back, no sooner than 24 hours later, and change the locks and remove the tenant and prevent the tenant from entering the unit again under threat of criminal trespass. So this is a quick process, it typically takes about a month, sometimes three to five weeks, occasionally it'll take longer. But typically, this is, this is a short process that has to happen between the time that a tenant fails to pay rent and the time that they can actually be put out on the street. Next slide, please. And this is a map of the five precincts in Travis County. Precinct five covers a smaller area, but it's a lot of central Austin. You can see precinct two is north and west. Three is southwest, four covers the southeast sort of quadrant of the county, and one stretches northeast. Next slide. Shoshana, I think you're still on mute.
Yes, I was. Okay, cool. So I'll talk about some changes to the eviction process during COVID. There are three main buckets of changes. One is court orders, and then Marissa will talk about the Federal Cares Act, and then some of the city action that y'all have taken, so we don't really need to explain that that much, but we'll quickly hit on it. So next slide. Oh, before I get to court orders, I also, I had thought Basta has created a myriad of educational materials which y'all could circulate to your constituents. That's the website where we have a catalog of all of them. It goes through all of these changes in detail with pictures, with flow charts, to try to make what's pretty inaccessible accessible. We also are available to do live streams and video meetings and the like. So if you have a constituent or constituent organization who are asking for tenant education materials, definitely link them with us. Next slide. Okay, so on court orders, a month ago, we had a lot more to say on court orders. Today, not so much, because the Supreme Court of Texas had an order which, in which there was a moratorium on hearings for most eviction cases, and that expired on May 18. Travis County Justice Court had a moratorium on evictions that expired yesterday. To note, Williamson County courts are actually more progressive than Travis County courts at this moment. And their moratorium on eviction hearings is going to expire June 15. So there shouldn't be hearings occurring there except where there's an imminent threat. Next slide.
So we also have the Federal Cares Act, which was signed into law on March 27, and has essentially three major tenant protections in conjunction with an eviction moratorium that we think applies to about half of renters in Austin, is what we suspect based on available data that we have. It's important to note that we don't have complete data on exactly what is covered by the Cares Act. The Cares Act applies, these protections apply to covered properties, which are various types of subsidized housing, including tax credit housing and public housing, but also types of housing that have federally backed mortgages. And there are some good sources of data, including a map that Trala, Basta, and Texas Housers has put together for multifamily housing that is subject to these protections. And you can see an image of that map here, and we've got a bitly if you want to access that map. What we don't have, and what no one else that we are aware of has, is access to what's considered single-family properties that are, that have these types of mortgages. So unit, properties that have between one and four units rather than five or more units. So single-family homes, duplexes, and fourplexes, there's no comprehensive data out there, which is part of the reason that council has passed its most recent ordinance, giving tenants the ability to ask for confirmation from their landlord, particularly if they're a small landlord, whether they're covered by the Cares Act. But the important protections under the Cares Act is there's a moratorium on eviction filings for non-payment from March 27 through July 25. Landlords in covered properties also can't issue notices to vacate for non-payment during that time. And after that time, after July 25, landlords can issue notices to vacate, but those notices to vacate have to be for at least 30 days, rather than the typical three days or one day it would otherwise be required. And also during that 120-day period, late fees cannot be charged for non-payment or late payment of rent in those covered properties. Next slide, please. And then, of course, there's a number of actions that have been taken on the city level, which we're very grateful for. The mayoral order that prohibited the issuance of notices to vacate through July 25, and also no lockouts or landlord liens through that same date. Of course, the opportunity to cure ordinance that gives tenants 60 days to cure their default of rent payments from March through August, and that they have to be issued a notice of proposed eviction and then given 60 days to pay before the statutorily required three-day notice to vacate or one day, if the lease shortens it, can be issued, and therefore allowing the landlord to proceed with eviction. And then most recently, as I, as I just mentioned, the Cares Act disclosure that landlords have to respond to a tenant letter asking if the Cares Act applies to the property where the tenant lives. Next slide.
Okay, so just putting all of what we heard together, this is kind of a timeline of what we anticipate we're going to be seeing if there are no additional changes. Of course, ordinances and orders can be extended, new moratoriums can be imposed, there could be changes at the federal level. But so here on June 1, or June 2, eviction hearings have begun. So today, there are 20 hearings which are taking place in Travis County, they're all in JP 1 today. For these hearings, which are starting right now, we, they seem to be the cases which are backlog, so they were all filed before the moratorium went into effect on March 13. And we expect that there probably will be very few defenses since they were all filed before the moratorium, and then the Cares Act protections and the city protections came in place. What we did here, we're part of Eviction Solidarity Network and we're turning out and observing and witnessing these hearings. And I heard reports this morning that every single tenant who showed up talked about how COVID impacted them. So even though their initial default on rent may not, it may have still been impacted by COVID before, you know, in early March, but they were impacted even if it was before that moratorium went into place. We also expect to see potentially cases which were filed where the notice to vacate was issued against the mayoral order, or the tenant wasn't given opportunity to cure under the city council order. So we expect, right now, there's over 300 active cases, and we expect most of them to be heard or decided upon potentially dismissed between now and July 25. On July 25 is when we expect the first wave of evictions, which would be non-Cares Act, non-payment evictions for April and May rent, because that's when the mayoral order is up. Then on August 24, we expect a second wave of evictions, which are going to be the Cares Act non-payment cases, and then the continuing cases where the 60-day opportunity to cure is up. And on October 24, there's going to be no more opportunity to cure as of now. Next slide. Okay, so what does the data tell us? So we're going to talk a bit about some data which we've obtained. It's mostly through scraping the Travis County Court's website. It's important to note that right now, that data isn't super accessible and that there is a lot we don't know with the data. So being able to have better data would allow us in the future to be able to have more insight into what is, what is the current state of things.
So this slide and the next one give a little bit of historical context for the number of eviction filings that we've seen in Travis County. This shows the number of filings over the last six years through 2019. You can see that in 2014, there were just under 8,000 total filings, and that's gone up by about 50% over those six years to 2019, when we had just under 12,000 filings. You also can see the split here between filings that ultimately were dismissed versus filings that resulted in a judgment. We don't have here who the judgment was for, whether it was for the landlord or the tenant, but we know from experience that the overwhelming majority of judgments are for landlords and not for tenants. And one thing that I just want to point out is that while dismissals are often better for tenants than an ultimate judgment, a lot of times, there's, there's sort of hidden data in those dismissals. Sometimes landlords will say, "You have to pay us the filing fee, you have to pay us all of the late fees, you have to pay all of these other fees, and then we will dismiss." And so while it doesn't ultimately result in a judgment against the tenant, what you don't see from this data is that oftentimes tenants are forced to spend lots and lots more money than just the rent that they owe in order to avoid that ultimate judgment. Or what this also doesn't show is the tenants who move out in response to a filing, and the landlord dismisses before it ever gets to the trial stage, but it still results in a tenant being displaced. Next slide, please. And then this is also over the same period of time from 2014 to 2019, but broken down by JP precinct. And so Shoshana has nicely color-coded these so that they match up with the map that you can see there on the left. And you can see that precincts two and one, in the blue and pink, are showing the most dramatic increase over the last five or six years. That five, three, and four are relatively flat, but you see very dramatic increases over the last four years or so from precincts one and two. We are working on getting zip code level data that will show exactly where the number of filings are originating from. And I think that once we have that, you're going to see that the dramatically increased numbers of filings match up with the locations throughout the city where we know gentrification and displacement is happening most acutely. Next slide.
Okay, so to talk a little bit about what's happening right now. So Basta, along with our partners at Eviction Solidarity Network, has released an eviction surveillance COVID-19 tool, which we're calling the Eviction Solidarity Dashboard. And it's going, it tracks what is happening on every, any given day, it's updated every evening. So the data actually, on this slide, is old data because I had to submit this by 12 o'clock yesterday. And since then, I think we've had three additional, I can look it up. But we've had four additional filings, so we're now up to 2,885 filings in 2020. The active cases went down actually from 544 to 526, which probably is dismissal, either an agreement was reached or the tenant may have moved out. There have been 923 judgments issued. You can see in that middle-left chart that our eviction curve has flattened because of the moratorium and the advocacy for tenants. And in March, eviction filings were relatively steady, or there weren't an increase in the number of eviction filings at the same rate as previous years. So we have the ability right now to be able to keep this curve flat. This is a man-made crisis and is an entirely preventable crisis. Also, the dashboard has data on a status of cases by JP, and then you can click through on some of those arrows to get a deeper dive into, into what's going on in each precinct. And then, as Marissa said, we're also going to be updating maps with zip code level data, and we're hoping to add additional layers of data, including kind of top evictors and things like that. And you can check out the map at the URL on the presentation. Next slide. So just doing a deeper dive into what's happening like right now in June. There are 264 hearings scheduled right now. Most of them are, well, all of them are in JP 1 and JP 4. And we've seen 256 evictions filed since the moratorium, so that's since mid-March. Since the mayoral order and the opportunity to cure in Cares Act went into effect, it's been only around 40 some odd cases which have been filed. And of those new cases which were filed, six of them have resulted in judgments. Those are likely those imminent threat cases, the more immediate cases, we expect that number to rise. Next slide. So this is just eviction filings by day in 2020. And you'll see that it graphically declines as we get to late March. You'll also see patterns which emerge every year, which is that it's the middle of the month normally when you see the spike in eviction filings. Also, what, if you look at historical data, what you'll see is normally in April, the number of both filings and judgments goes down. Our best guess is that might have to do with taxes and having that just like additional infusion of money. Obviously, well, that's not going to happen in April this year, although maybe in July, that tax refunds could help. And across the country, what we've heard from folks at eviction lab and in other cities who are also seeing that as moratoriums are lifting, there hasn't been a huge rush for filings so long as there are other protections in place. So it'll be interesting to see when filings start going up, and if in anticipation of July 25, when the mayoral order is up, we start seeing more of those filings. So next slide. Okay, and then this is just current status of cases by precinct. So you can see, as I said, JP 1 and JP 4, both of them have already scheduled, have pretty packed dockets. We're going to have 249 hearings between those two precincts. You'll also see JP 5 has a number which are in progress, and they haven't even started scheduling hearings, so there's a lot more yet to be scheduled. Next slide. And so just kind of to end, this is the calm before the storm. It's starting, but we think that there are going to be a lot of, we're going to be seeing a lot of evictions. And there's also, I guess, a room for a lot of advocacy because we have tools as kind of advocates that we don't normally have. So I think we have the ability to be able to weather the storm in a way that during normal times, we don't necessarily have that ability. So thank you, and if anyone has any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. And thank you for the work that you do. Colleagues, questions? Yes, Councilmember Flanagan and Mayor Proten.
The precincts are, are poor estimates of demographic. They're just so, they're so disparate in demographics across the precincts. And precinct two, which is the Travis County, all of the Travis County part of my district is very different than the part of precinct two on the other side of I-35. Do you have any sense, I know you're working on zip code data, do you have, I mean, precinct two had some really dramatic numbers. Do you have any sense on where, what's happening with that?
So I think that we need more data, so the zip codes will help. Also, property-specific information could help. When the innovation team was doing research on evictions, they were able to get property-level data for some of 2017 and 2018, but that's not readily available to the public. So I think the more data that we could get, then the more of an ability we could do a deeper dive to be able to highlight and kind of study some of those disparities. Because you're totally right, like doing just a big block doesn't tell us all that much.
Can I go, Mayor? Okay. As far as the defenses, I'm assuming that the state could create new defenses, right? So if there's an, so just to make sure I understand, there's an opportunity to maybe, and I'm sure you're already doing it as advocates, but to add to our, another thing to our legislative agenda, which many times feels like wishful thinking, but, you know, every now and then, I'm pleasantly surprised by our governor. So every now and then. But with that, you know, I feel like that could be something that we could be reaching out to our local state reps in, I don't think there'll be a special session called or anything, but maybe there will be. But if there was essentially a defense, because specifically for COVID, where they, you know, allows them, obviously, if we can't put any more protections in place, like hopefully, we can extend the notice to vacate, you know, protections, and maybe the county court decides to extend theirs, and hopefully, you know, doing everything we can, but as a, as a last resort, so we don't end up with people with, a lot of people with evictions on their record, when practically speaking, they're, they're being, they're going to be, they might be in a situation where they're losing their, the roof over their head, but then to not add insult to injury in that, you know, now they have an eviction on their record. That would be one way to, to allow, I guess, the creation of a new defense, is that right? That's what would have to happen?
Yes, so cities have some ability to do that, the state has the ability to preempt a lot of that. But, but one thing that does not exist until these more recent ordinances is an opportunity to cure. In other states, a three-day notice is often a three-day opportunity to pay or quit. And in Texas, you can offer to pay, but your landlord has no obligation to accept that money once you have defaulted. And so even if you come up with every penny that you owe, including late fees and court fees and everything else, your landlord has the ability to say, "We don't want to accept your money, we're tired of working with you, and we're proceeding with an eviction because you haven't paid on time." And so what the opportunity to cure ordinance offered is great, particularly given, you know, what's going on in the pandemic. But once that expires, in Austin and anywhere else in the state, there is no ability to come up with that, regardless of the reasons for your inability to pay.
Okay, and I guess I would imagine there's going to be a lot more people who, with the inability to cure, is my assumption, is that if you, if you weren't able to pay your rent in April or May, it's, yeah, it's going to be hard to get to that cure part. I guess just with that being said, if there are things that are specifically at the city level, please let us know so we can implement whatever, whatever power we have at this level. I'm sure we have a very supportive council to. And then I'm assuming you would provide opportunities for pro bono help for, once this, this calm before the storm hits? Because I personally would be interested in doing what I can to. And then lastly, I would, I've been asked to, to talk about evictions at a group, would y'all be available to? I'll just, I'll just have my office reach out to you, all right? So I can, other council members can talk, thanks.
Yeah, we would love to.
I'm not sure who the best person to direct this question to is, but I'm curious about what kind of, what kind of connections can, can the city make or are we making? or are we making with people that are experiencing this or in this eviction process in order to provide assistance for them? You know, it's a top priority for, for us to, to help people avoid homelessness and just to help, help people with services such as rental assistance, particularly right now. So is there any connection between our services and folks that are going through this process? Is there a caseworker who works with them who says, hey, let's connect you to this service? Do you guys know about that or is that a question for our staff?
So there are a myriad, maybe too big of a word for it. But there are a few major resources for tenants in Austin, which y'all are aware of, Taxpayer Grande Legal Aid, our, our hotline is always open. But of course, the need is always greater than the ability to serve often tenants' counsel. And then for folks who, especially folks who have been experiencing homelessness and had some placement housing by Echo, I know that they have a number of efforts right now. And those folks tend to be more already matched with case management services. I do think that more support to tenants for navigating these waters and even navigating at times the rental assistance program, all these could improve outcomes.
I just, I just want to, to be more specific. So, and this may be for our staff. We, we've created a rental assistance program, which is important during this time of impact of COVID. We're about to go off of and lose one of the, one of the policy changes that were, that were in place for a little while. And so I would like to understand how we can directly relate the rental assistance we have available to people that are experiencing evictions. So I guess that's a question for Rosie. I don't know if you all have thought about that yet. I know we're talking about a first come, first served kind of program. And we've talked about a lottery program, not sure what we're talking about. But it just seems to me, when we had, had the conversation earlier, we were talking about, well, you know, what is our need? And how do we connect the services we're making available to our need? And to the need that's in the community. And to my mind, this is perhaps an example, pretty clear example of a need. Definitely identify and, and be more proactive, perhaps, in terms of making those connections. So, so I don't know if you want to speak to that now at all, Rosie, or if that's something to think about?
Hi, everyone. This is Rosie Trulove, Director of Neighborhood Housing and Community Development. That is a need that we do strongly recognize. And we have been thinking about how we can bolster the support in this particular area, whether it be with coronavirus relief funds or with housing trust fund or with rethinking how we plan to utilize our community development block grants next year. So we've been working with, with, with BASTA and been having conversations with different stakeholders on that front. And wanted to hear the benefit of this particular conversation to help us identify any other priorities or, or policy initiatives that might be out there so that we can kind of create a little bit more holistic of a response. So it is very much on our mind and it is something that we are actively working on.
Okay, that's great. When you get to a point where you've thought through and figured out what you think the best approach is, I'm sure you'll let us know.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Rethria?
Yes, I want to understand the, the eviction process. I think I heard you say that once they follow the eviction process for tenants, then it automatically goes on their record saying that they had, eviction had been filed against them? Is that correct? Does that go on your record?
It, it potentially does. It depends on who's looking for that data and if they know where to look. So if, if you know what to do, you can go to the Travis County Justice of the Peace support website and you can look at, at data and you can search by case number or party type. If you know what to do, like Shoshana does, you can actually scrape that data. And there are some for-profit data collection entities out there that scrape that data, that put it into like tenant databases that landlords can then pay for and they can see whether there's a judgment against you or whether there's merely a filing. The fact that there's a filing is never going to go away. There's no expungement process for getting rid of that in the way that if you are charged with a crime, but the charge is dismissed, you may be eligible for an expungement. So that is there. If there's no judgment on your record, it's obviously far better than, than having a judgment. But if landlords know where to look, they can see that your landlord did take action to file against you. So we often advise clients to avoid the filing because of the negative repercussions it can have, even if they resolve something with their landlord. Future landlords may look at it and say, it got to the point where they had to file. We don't want to run to you.
And when there is an eviction and there's, you know, you lose, the court determines your rent, then, and that you have to move out. You said that they were given three days. Do their, if they're not out by three days, do they lose their possession? You said they changed the lock or do they throw everything outside?
So the three days is for the initial notice to vacate before the filing of the court case. After the case goes to trial, if the tenant loses, then they have five days after the date of the judgment to file an appeal. And on the sixth day, if they have not filed an appeal, then the landlord can seek what's called a writ of possession, which is an order that allows the constable to come and post a 24-hour warning notice on their door. And that is the point at which they can physically be removed. Their belongings can be removed and the locks can be changed.
And what if they can't move the, their possession because they don't have a way to move it? What happens?
So unfortunately, that's, that's when you see things that are put out onto the curve and those, those possessions are just put out, you know, in, in the front of the property. And what happens to them is, is, is not, you know, it's, it's not a pretty process. And, and a lot of people end up losing, you know, their belongings in addition to so much, so much else in that process.
And that is an area where different cities have created kind of diversion type programs in which where storage is provided or that there's regulations about where the belongings can, can be placed. So that is an area in which I, I know we've had some conversations with NHCD about kind of potentially creative thinking about how to address that problem.
I would really love to, to look into that problem. Management, manager, if you can really look into it and Rosie, if, because I think that'd be, that's very hard on a family when they lose all their possession, especially they don't have a place to store it. And you're out in the street and now you're not only worrying about where you're gonna find a housing ad, but you're, what you're gonna happen, what's gonna happen to all your possession out there on the street. So I would really love to see something done about that.
Thank you, Natasha.
I, I was just gonna follow up. I have my own questions, but I don't want to jump in front of anybody else with their hand up. I was just gonna follow up with what Pia was making reference to just now. I'm really interested in this storage idea. And not even just from the perspective of people losing their lodging. But we've gotten a lot of these kinds of questions from folks who have a place to go. They're just having to significantly downsize. So they're going from a four-bedroom to a one-bedroom. And, you know, the assumption is that eventually that they will get back on their feet. But that space in the interim, you know, having to decide whether or not you get rid of all your stuff, because right now it's hard, is a really tough decision. So I echo Pia's sentiment. I'd like very much to follow that, that conversation for both of those reasons. For people who are just losing their housing and people who are just not losing their housing, but just downsizing dramatically. Thank you.
Appreciate that, council members, and we'll be looking at that. It coincides with the conversation we've been having about storage for our homeless community. And so we'll think about that as we move forward.
Anything else on the presentation? Yes, Councilor Tovo.
Thank you, thank you very much. This is really useful, grim, but very useful information just to get a sense of the scale of, of, of the eviction crisis in our community. So thank you for that. I have a question for our staff about, to follow up on what I think Councilmember Kitchen was asking about. I'd like to ask the staff for a status of the tenant eviction counseling money that we had identified. Our council, my office had brought forward with a long, a resolution that had passed to add money for designated for eviction counseling. And it was my understanding that that was going to be added to a notice of funding availability that NHCD was releasing. And it doesn't, it's not clear to me whether that NOFA has a piece of it that is for eviction counseling. We had approved our budget for $75,000 specifically for eviction counseling last in 2018, 2019. And so Rosie or whoever the appropriate person is, could you help us understand where, where that is? It was my understanding that that $75,000 was going to be paired potentially with some additional money to make it closer to $250,000 so that individuals who were, who were facing eviction had that ability to be represented through the court process, which we know can make a big difference in terms of their ability to access housing in the future and really just get a better, a better landing place for the situation they're facing.
Yes, I can speak to that. We did issue that notice of funding availability as an R request for proposals. We actually paired it with other additional housing trust fund dollars that got it up to about $750,000. And then it included a piece of emergency rental assistance. The solicitation closed, I want to say, handful of weeks ago. We didn't get the substantial responses that we were hoping to get. So we're looking at what, what we can do with that particular solicitation, either award in part or figure out a different way of trying to address that need. That's part of the review that we're, we're undergoing right now that I referenced in response to, response to Councilmember Kitchen.
Rosie, how, how much of that $500,000 was allocated for eviction counseling? Do you know?
I don't remember the breakdown. I'd have to get back to you on that. I know we had added an additional $250,000 of emergency rental assistance dollars to that. But there were another, a number of other elements of the scope. And so I couldn't give you the specific breakdown on what each of those aspects were.
Given the immediate need, what do you, I understand that you're looking at, at the responses to see if there's an opportunity to proceed with, I can't remember how you expressed it, part of them. But given the immediate need for that eviction counseling, I mean, for all of it actually, but the eviction counseling piece included, do you think there's an opportunity within some of the responses you got to proceed with that portion of it?
I, I don't want to, I don't want to say that there is without having confirmed with staff because I know that they've been looking at that. We want to make sure that the solution that we put out or that we contract with is gonna meet the best, is gonna be the best to meet the need that we have right now, knowing that it's even changed from what we put out as part of the solicitation. And that solicitation was actually issued before COVID was, was largely impacting the community. And so we want to just make sure we're pausing and moving forward in the way that makes the best and most sense for the community and what we're seeing right now, given the wave that we expect to see that Ms. Greger was mentioning earlier.
Well, that makes sense to me. I, I guess I would ask our manager, you and our manager, if you could update us just as very soon as possible so that we have a sense of what, what resources are going to be put in place and can
Absolutely.
have an opportunity for a council discussion about supplementing those if necessary. Thank you so much.
Okay, anything else on this presentation? Laura Kassar.
Thank you to Tral and Basta for your presentation. Councilmember Tovo, thanks for you and your team working with my staff to make sure that this was top of mind today. I know that today's been going along. And so one thing I just wanted to, to note was in the message board post that we put up on the CARES Act framework, we also tried to allocate a little bit of money into rent, into the rental support section for potential eviction defense or to provide a little bit of flexibility, not to take away from any of the rental money that was proposed by staff, but to add a little bit and provide flexibility for that to be eviction defense if we need it. And then second, Shoshana, if you could tell us, have, do y'all have a way of tracking or knowing whether any of these evictions that are being filed or that would be heard would be against the council ordinance or mayor's order?
So we are attempting to collect that data. So we do know that some of the evictions which have been filed were our CARES Act properties, which were filed after the CARES Act prohibition. So we know that to be true. Thus far, none of those cases, I don't believe any of those cases have been set. Of course, there also could be kind of physical harm exceptions or it could be for CARES Act an issue other than non-payment. For the mayoral order, we're not going to know that until we're observing the hearings. As part of the eviction solidarity network, we are calling on volunteers to be able to witness every single hearing which is heard. So we had 10 people on the, on the virtual hearings today. I just got a message from one of my staff members that one of the men who was evicted today, elderly man who had surgery in January and told the court that he chose to, to live and be evicted as opposed to the other way around. So we're witnessing those to be able to capture those stories. And in that process, we have questions to be able to track was the notice, when was the notice to vacate issued? So I think over time, we'll be able to collect additional information. That's also information that the courts themselves could collect and could disclose. And that's also a reason for, a place in which legal advocacy and assistance can be very helpful because courts do not normally, it's not routine for them to grant with discovery or for tenants to request discovery. So sometimes without getting the written documentation, you don't actually know what has or has not, has, has or has not occurred. So I think that there, I, we believe, because we've gotten reports also just from Basta, from tenants who've got a notice to vacate and we've seen the notice to vacate. It hasn't yet gone to court. But we see these laws being violated, so we assume that this will happen. And if there's not some robust support for tenants to be able to vindicate their rights, then there's a large chance that a lot of those tenants will either be formally evicted or will choose to move out to avoid that on their records.
Well, I think we need to sort out what the system is, formal or informal, for when people are getting notices to vacate that they shouldn't get. The city know about it and could issue information to those landlords. And, and when those things land in court, we should find some way to know because we should, you know, those orders and those ordinances are passed with a purpose. And it seems like they have reduced evictions really, really significantly, but we shouldn't be letting any fall through the cracks. So thank you for your help with that. And manager, if we could just keep an eye on that, that would be really helpful.
Yes. That said, thank you very much for the, for the, for the presentation. Colleagues, it's 2:43.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Before we go into closed session, just by way of housekeeping, we have an item on the agenda for Thursday that relates to police funding. I'm going to join together that item number seven, which is on our listed agenda. Join that with the discussion about the demonstrations for Thursday, for Thursday afternoon. So speakers will be called on that at 3 o'clock. Letting people sign up for either one of those or both of those, but to speak one time. So there'll be speakers that speak at 9 o'clock, at 10 o'clock in the morning on our agenda. Save and Accept Item Seven at 2 o'clock on zoning. And then sometime 3 o'clock or after that to speak on item number seven. And what had been listed is a discussion item that we're now going to let people sign up for as people were signing up for the police item anyhow in order to be able to speak. Yes, Councilmember Alter.
I forgot to mention earlier for item 48, Councilmember Kassar's resolution on the domestic violence facility and the budget. I wanted to be listed as a co-sponsor. I'd reached out to him on Friday. I know that Councilmember Ellis also reached out last night. So I'm not sure how best to handle that or what our options are.
You've just handled it. This is Ann, that's perfectly fine in a public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Not limited to the number of people that can be listed.